Muscatine City Council will come to order. We'll begin this evening with a roll call. Fran?
Councilmembers, Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natbig.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Spread.
Six present and one absent, your honor.
Thank you, Fran, very much. Folks, would you rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I trust everyone has their windows and their vehicles up. Item number four on tonight's agenda are communications from the citizens. If there is anyone, council chambers, that would like to discuss an issue with council that is not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium. Tell us your name and your address, please.
My name is Robert Bromwell. I live at 2414 Lucas Street, here in Muscatine, of course. And before I start, I would like to ask the council, how many of you were born and raised in Muscatine? Show hands. Two. Okay? That's, I was just curious because I didn't know, because some of you I have never met. And that's why I wanted to find out. I'm here tonight just for a few brief minutes to talk about the Greenwood Cemetery steps that have been there for approximately 100 years. At one time, there were four concrete stairways from the bottom of the bluff to the top. That's going down Mississippi Drive, as we know it today. It used to be known as Front Street. Up the bluff there, there was four concrete stairways going up that way from Inamese down to the cemetery. Okay? These public right-of-ways provided safe pedestrian corridors from the south end to the top of the bluff. Now only two are left. Both are unique gems which add to the historic appeal of our town. One is the Cherry Street steps from West Second Street up to the foot of Cherry Street. They are still being used and are in good repair. Another is the cemetery steps from Hershey Avenue up to the top of Greenwood Cemetery. Until just a few years ago, the cemetery steps were also in good condition and were well-used, especially by young people, walking to and from school and school activities. The cemetery steps were also an important pedestrian route from West Hill area to and from the riverfront, South End businesses, and Kentstein Park. They were the only safe pedestrian walkway west of the Eighth Street, Main Street. Unfortunately, maintenance of the cemetery steps was neglected. The steps fell into despair and were closed by the city. At that time, only minor repairs were needed. Due to continued neglect, the damage has become more serious, but most of the stairway is still in sound condition. It appears that someone recently removed about a dozen steps at the top so that the stairway is not as easily accessed as it once was. There are a couple of places lower down which need repair work. And the handrails need to be replaced. With some repairs and a little continued maintenance, the cemetery steps could easily last for another century. Now that's saying something for our forefathers that put them stairways in over 100 years ago. I have here with me tonight a petition with 521 signatures on it. I would like the council to take a look at it and see what they think, but there's at least 500 people out there, plus the people that are with me here tonight in the council chambers, that are in favor of repairing, repairing, and opening the steps back up. Not new ones, just repairing. I would just like to close, since I've only got three minutes, I would just like to close with this letter that I received on my email a couple of days ago. It says, "Mr. Mayor, Administrator, and Alderman, I would like to express my support for restoring the Greenwood Cemetery stairway. Many of the younger folks in Muscatine aren't aware it exists or the historical significance it has. Sometime in the past, the steps fell into disrepair and the city neglected to maintain them when their upkeep would have been minimal. However, if corrective action isn't taken in the very near future, the steps will continue to deteriorate to the point that repair costs will be prohibitive. The closed or no trespassing signs will not excuse the city of liability should someone get hurt on the steps in their current condition. The liability will probably exist until they are either repaired or completely removed. No doubt, the cost of repair will be considerable. However, the cost of removal and taking the necessary precaution to stabilize the hillside from erosion will also amount to a substantial expense. Please give your consideration to preserving this bit of Muscatine history. This stairway dates back to a time in Muscatine when a person's feet were their primary means of transportation. It is my opinion that the money will be better spent in repairing the stairway than it will be tearing it out. Perhaps a portion of the restoration cost could be offset with private funding. Respectfully, Mike Lawrence, 1112 Oak Street, Muscatine." And that is, I just would like the council, I would like to pass this on to the council so that they've got them, so that they can pass them around, but there's 521 signatures on here. So, can I give it to you?
I think it goes to Fran.
Okay, I'll take it over to her. And one last little story about your mayor. I used to deliver milk to him when he was in diapers.
And from, yes, from the mayor, I did not know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue on with citizen comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a comment about his comments?
With the exception of delivering milk to me when I was a baby.
I could probably get some other juicy stuff for the following city councilman, but I don't know of anything right at the moment. First of all, I want to say thank you to the group of people that have shown up here tonight, very interested and very dedicated to saving those historical stairs. Currently, the city of Muscatine is trying to look at repairing not new stairs, and they're getting two repair estimates together to find out exactly how much will it cost. One of the citizens, in fact, the citizens here tonight, wrote a letter to the editor and basically, in a nutshell, that he said there's a whole lot of electorate that want the city to regain part of its past by rebuilding the Greenwood Cemetery stairs. When he checked with the historical site people at the federal level, they told him that these stairs could possibly qualify for a quote-unquote "landscape preservation clause." And I just want to say thank you for doing your research. All these people are asking for is to be a part of what they call the CIP in December, the budget plan, to be put on the agenda and let the council take a look at that expenditure then. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Peggy?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
Peggy Gordon, 802 Weir Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the dog park. Just take a couple minutes of your time. First and foremost, let me thank you for including it in the comprehensive plan and listening to the citizens and what we sort of desire in that we want to work towards an off-leash park. That comprehensive plan is a very critical step in moving this forward, so we appreciate seeing that it's one of the top initiatives. As we know, a top dog park is one of the amenities that will draw people, whether it's visitors or new residents, to Muscatine. It's also going to be a place that brings like-minded citizens together, whether it's visiting in the dog park, working together as volunteers, or preserving the park. It's also a great, as we know, Blue Zone initiative. I mean, it's one of the key initiative drivers. I'd like to take this opportunity to let you know about an active growing group of citizens that are willing to move this project forward. You've seen Patty, Erin, Sarah, working with the community action team, but there is now a support group working with them or for them. Okay? We are the feet on the street. We are the grunts willing to do the work. We're the people talking to the other citizens. Okay? This group of people, Citizens for an Off-Leash Muscatine Park, have accomplished a lot when it comes to the awareness over the last few months. Since the initial public forum in March or April, we've had several dog walks, meetings, we've planned events, we've got a Muscatine Community Fund already set up, Facebook pages, so we're sort of working all the angles for just awareness at this point. Okay? We meet, work on tasks and events, we talk to people about their opinions, and we promote the dog park in a positive way. I would challenge the council, Parks and Recreation Committee, do not let this languish. Okay? The dog park's been on the menu for a few years, definitely in the city council minutes and any minutes online since about 2012, but we know there's been conversations probably going back to 2009. We have the momentum, and we want to keep it moving and see progress. Help us, talk to us, join us, whether it's coming to an event like Barktoberfest that we're going to have in October, which is a nice, family-friendly event, or walking with us on a Blue Zone on Tuesday nights. Okay? So, work with us and use us the best of your abilities. Okay? We are here to help. Again, thank you for keeping this top of mind and putting it on the comprehensive plan. It's a critical amenity for Muscatine. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And I believe we have one more that I'm aware of anyway, individual that would like to address council this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Joanie Axel, 208 West Second Street, number 300. I'm serving as the community program manager for the Blue Zones Project Muscatine, and I'm really just here to acknowledge very appreciatively all of the support of the city in the effort so far. Our kickoff, as you know, was last week. It was, we touched over 600 citizens. Each and every one of the council members, the mayor was part of the program and given high accolades for his good sense and humor.
Milk I had when I was young.
Greg, the city administrator, has been very, very helpful, and we have lots left to do, but I did want to say thank you. It was just a wonderful event, and you all were very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanie. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to discuss with council an issue that is not included in tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll move on. Item number five, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw a request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A through B, items 8A through H, items 9A, the filing of communication, which is 12A, and tonight's bills totaling $1,422,588.77?
So moved.
Mark, in a second.
Second.
Second. Scott, in discussion, council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries six zero. And moving along to item number seven, public hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed vacation of utility easements in the Cedar Plaza subdivision, Phase Two. A request has been received on behalf of the property owner to vacate existing utility easements along and between lots eight and nine in Phase Two of the Cedar Plaza subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission has unanimously approved this request. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak to this issue? Is there a motion to close?
Move to close.
That would be Osama, second.
Second, your honor.
Second, Bob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries six zero. Item B. This public hearing concerns the proposed Weed Park Maintenance Building Project. The maintenance shop located at Weed Park has been operating out of its current location since 1973. The facility is in need of replacement. City council approved this project during the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget discussions. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak to this topic? Motion to close.
Move to close.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Jeanette. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries six zero. Item C. This public hearing concerns the proposed city of Muscatine's comprehensive plan. The plan provides, pardon me, provides a roadmap based on community input for leveraging the strengths of the community, taking advantage of opportunities, correcting weaknesses, and addressing challenges in order to achieve all goals of the plan. Prior to the formal adoption of this 10-year plan, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to comment to this topic? Motion to close.
So, so moved, your honor.
That would be Bob.
Second.
Second, Mark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries six zero. Down to item 11 from the city administrator, the resolution vacating utility easements in the Cedar Plaza subdivision, Phase Two. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution vacating utility easements in the Cedar Plaza subdivision, Phase Two?
So moved, your honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second, Scott. Any discussion, council? It's a roll call vote, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item B. Resolution approving city of Muscatine's comprehensive plan. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the city of Muscatine's comprehensive plan as per the attached memorandum?
So moved.
Mark? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second, Scott. Any discussion?
Yes. I would like just to make a comment and ask a question here. I know that this comprehensive plan took a lot of work here, and I would like, first of all, to commend Andrew, Steve Boca, and Community Action Team here for teaming up and putting this comprehensive plan together for the next 10 years. My question is, now we have a comprehensive plan on hand, how do we proceed moving forward from here? I know there is no dollar attached to any phase of this plan here. Are we going to shelf this after all this work, or are going to tear it apart section by section and start evaluating and look for funding for each phase of this comprehensive plan?
Andrew, I don't know if you have anything to add, but I'll kind of kick it off. There's many ways that a comprehensive plan or the component pieces of it will move forward. The capital improvement plan is one of those pieces, and Andrew and staff has begun work on that, and council will see that tentatively in December, and that will include capital projects over the next five years. Many of those are items that are included in the comprehensive plan. Others are not, that are brought forward by staff. You've got several initiatives that are going on as well. You've got the University of Iowa Sustainability Initiative, you've got Blue Zones Initiative, and there's, in those initiatives, for example, with the University of Iowa, there has 13 different initiatives that are going on. One of those is the Dog Park Program that was brought up a moment ago. So, there are committee committees working on components of the comprehensive plan right now and moving it forward. And as you may recall, the city council will be talking about goals here in October as well. That's another, I mean, there are many steps in which the comprehensive plan can be forward, and I would hope that council takes pieces from the comprehensive plan as we begin that discussion of goals and priorities for the next year, next two years. The budget is your number-one policy document on an annual basis, which really is your implementation plan for the coming year, and that's where council really gets to determine exactly what projects move forward and what funding is allocated, resources, excuse me, are allocated on an annual basis. One other item I left out is the zoning ordinance, our 1974 zoning ordinance. Our land use, this is a land use plan, and that's our land use chapter of the city ordinance. That, it's time to get that updated. The city council has agreed as well. We've budgeted for that program, and that's kind of the next comprehensive program following the CIP that the Community Development Department and staff will be working on. And that's really, that's a large part of the implementation plan for a comprehensive plan. Andrew, anything else you'd like to add?
I think you covered it all pretty well. I think the thing I would highlight is the rewrite of the zoning ordinance, which is going to be quite a significant thing, and will be taking up a lot of my time over the course about the next year or so. And the blueprint for what that actually is going to be is set out in the comprehensive plan, and over the course of the next year, we're filling in the actual details, so.
So, based on what we heard here so far, the priority for each phase, depending on how the funding is going to come in, and how council is going to proceed, what priority is for each phase? Did I understand correctly?
Right. I think one of the other things it's intended to be is kind of a tool for prioritization. You know, I think, you know, that was one of the last paragraphs that we added, that, you know, recognize that all this, you know, of course, is dependent on the kind of funding that'll be available over the next decade, but kind of where this is intended to be used is for the community to indicate what's best to do with the money that we have available.
It's a tool for the city council and for city staff and for the city council to use to help set priorities and to, excuse me, develop policy such as the zoning ordinance.
I have one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Osama. I just wondered, Tom Spread, who's not here, had made a comment during the first meeting of the month about, basically, we're going to pay for this as we go. Was that, was his comments included?
Yes. Thus the motion, and if you look on page two, we'll point out the paragraph that was inserted on page 1-3.
Paragraph C or something, wasn't it?
Okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure, because I think council and as a whole, we didn't all jump up and down and yell and scream or anything, but I think we were all very supportive of that. It was a common sense.
It talks about fiscal responsibility. It talks about allocating resources, creating priorities. The paragraph is on page two of the memorandum, and we agree that it makes good sense to include. It also is one of the, it was also addressed in the vision, mission, values, and goal-setting session that council adopted for this calendar year.
Mayor, I'd like to echo what Osama said and commend Andrew and Steve and all the citizen committees, because, I mean, there's just a ton of work that got done there, and it's, it is a great tool for trying to prioritize it and move ahead.
Anyone else, council? Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. I believe, Mark, you made the motion. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the 10-year comp plan? It's a roll call vote, beginning with Mark.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting the low bid awarding the contract and approving the contract for the end bond for the Tea Hanger Apron Drainage Improvement Project at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. Six bids were received for this project with a low bid from Muscatine Bridge Company Incorporated in the amount of $117,708.04. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Phil? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second, Osama. Discussion. It's a roll call vote, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the WPCP Lab Annex Project. At its August 15, 2013, meeting, city council awarded the bid for this project to Quality Construction Services Incorporated in the amount of $483,108. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second.
Second, Mark. Any discussion? Also a roll call, beginning with Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the annual city street finance report for fiscal year 2012-2013. Street-related expenditures for the year totaled $5,183,830, which includes $4,710,823 paid from city funds and funding sources, and $473,007 of street lighting costs provided by Muscatine Power and Water. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Bob? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second, Osama. Discussion. A roll call, beginning with Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item F. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order for cart tippers for the refuse collection pilot program. Three bids were received for this purchase with a low bid from Elliott Equipment Company for four Perkins tippers in the amount of $23,218. There is $50,000 budgeted for the purchase of the tippers and the containers for the pilot program. The total cost is $58,143, with the remaining costs coming from personal cost savings. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mark, in a second?
Second.
Second. Scott, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries six zero. Item G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order for containers for the refuse collection pilot program. Three bids were received for the purchase of 800 containers from ReRig Pacific Company in the amount of $34,925. There is $50,000 budgeted for the purpose of the tippers and the containers for the pilot program. The total cost is $58,143, with the remaining costs coming from personal cost savings. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
I heard Scott, and I heard Jeanette. I'll give you the second, okay? Any discussion?
I'd like to ask Laura to come up and refresh our memory on where these containers are going and what the pilot area is.
And just as a note, Laura's going to have a full presentation at the next in-depth session as well, including the map and all the information they hand out.
Yes, in October, I'll be back with a more detailed presentation.
are going and what the pilot area is.
And just as a note, Laura's going to have a full presentation at the next end-up session as well, including the map and all the information they hand out.
Yes, in October, I'll be back with a more detailed presentation, and also, by the end of next week, we'll have a map up on the website, the city website, stating the locations of the pilot program. As we discussed at budget time, we are starting this out as a pilot project, which will move us into automated collection down the road, a full automated garbage collection service. But what we're doing right now is purchasing containers. We'll purchase 800, 700 of them are 65-gallon, and 100 of them are a 35-gallon container, which we will take, residents who want the smaller container can certainly let us know before we deliver them at the end of October, early November. And again, we'll talk more in October about it, and I'll have information out by the end of next week. The locations are on our, what we call our commercial internal route, which are smaller amounts of residential, and that map will be the entire city map highlighting those areas. So, to make it easier, I think it would be better to wait till the map comes out, and we will certainly provide that information also to the journals, so if they would like to do a news story on that too, along with our end-up session. So, I mean, if there is a certain question of a certain areas included, I'd be happy to look it up, but I don't have the full map to show you tonight. I have individual maps.
What about the timing, the timetable for?
It is a 30-day turnaround from the time we place the order. I plan to place the order tomorrow with the company, and I should have the containers by mid-October. You will see city staff putting those containers out in the designated areas by the end of October, early November. We would like to have a few months under our belt before I come back to council with budget to talk about how the program's going.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, council? Thanks, Laura. Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries six zero. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order for two transit vehicles. At its August 1, 2013, meeting, city council authorized the Transit Department to purchase two transit buses with the transit portion of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, or DERA, grant funding. The buses will be purchased from Hogland Bus and Truck at a cost of $94,374 each for a total cost of $188,748. The DERA grant totals $155,988.46. The remaining amount, $32,799.54, will be the city's responsibility. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Bob?
Second.
Second, Jeanette, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries six zero. Item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order for fence repairs at Kentstein Park. One bid was received for the project from CR Landscaping in the amount of $29,946. There is $30,000 budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to approve the repair as submitted?
So moved.
Mark?
Second.
Second, Scott, discussion?
Your Honor, I do have one question for the director. Okay, Mr. Gal? Hello, Nick.
Hello.
Nick, you're repairing the fence down there. Is there anything else that's a safety hazard down there?
From what we found out, the fences are the major safety issue, what we've seen. We've actually asked for the fence repairs for at least nine years in the budget this year, for at least last nine fiscal year budgets. The repairs that we are doing to the fences are all safety issues out there, and that's what we've recognized out there. One thing that staff has done over the past several years is add soil underneath the fences where we've seen some erosion issues going on, so we have, as staff, tried to fix the problems as we can, but again, these are some major safety issues, not only for the participants, but also for the fans and spectators.
But everything else is in good shape?
Everything else, at this point, we could use some rain, so thank goodness for the rain right now, and I'm finally saying a prayer to Mother Nature, and hopefully she delivers for us tonight.
That's my, that's my question. Thank you.
And one other quick note, I believe the original cost was $60,000 plus or minus, and staff has actually done, so half of the work internally or in-house over the past couple of years as well. So, the work that they were able to do in-house.
Thank you, Nick. Is there a motion to approve the repair? Oh, we already have the motion. Discussion, anyone else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries six zero. Item 14 is communication from council members, beginning with Councilman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming down this evening. We've got a nice crowd here tonight. That isn't always the case. It's always nice to see the interest in what's going on in city government down here at City Hall, so again, thank you for coming.
Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott?
Nothing, thank you.
You don't want to talk about Iowa, Iowa State or anything?
Not, not this year.
Osama?
I have nothing, thank you.
Bob?
Your Honor, I just want to thank the group of people that are in the audience, especially the ones that are here for the stairs. I just pray that we can satisfy the need for that exercise up and down that historical cemetery stairs within the near future. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Jeanette?
You know, I can't help but wonder if Joanie's group with the Green Zones couldn't help out with the cemetery steps. That's good exercise. Not green, blue.
Blue.
It's bad when you forget. Blue Zones.
Anything else, Jeanette?
No, thank you.
Okay, and we'll turn to, let's see, which Griggs should we call them first? Grig Monsakar.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Fran.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. And my comments are simple. This is homecoming weekend for the football team, our Muskies, so go Muskies. Is there any other business, council?